I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832. This is a study session and a special meeting on Monday, September 9th, 2024, 5:30 PM. And I will start with a roll call of attendance, please.
Done?
Approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
No.
Moved by Director Regan.
Second.
Second by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, action items.
So, the reason we're having this, our study session switched to a special meeting is so that we can take a vote, because I am recommending approval of a resolution relating to closing. And I want to talk you through how it is, we have done this in the past. I know there's been some conversation about potentially changing this process in the future. We use the same parameters that we've used previously, and so I was just going to kind of talk you through how we go about that. So first of all, for elementary, we use the metro average, which we get from a class-size study that's done by our service co-op each year. And I did share with you, and just kind of a spreadsheet to give you some context around how this, how this looks. So if you look at the, and then I also printed it out for you, and it's just slightly different, because we had a, we had an enrollment update, I think by one or two today. Typically, we look at our enrollment on October 1st. That's the first time MDE pulls the numbers in order to determine funding and such. And so when I, when I'm sharing these with you, our September 8th data is a little bit different, it might be a little bit different by October 1. October 1 are the numbers that would typically show up in a report. So just know that what you're looking at for today's number, September 8th or September 9th, will be different on October 1st. So these aren't reported anywhere, these September 8 numbers. Okay, so I'm just trying to make that part clear. Okay, so up in the top right, you see our metro average, and I gave you 2019 and 2023, because I want to give you some context there, too. So you'll notice the 2019 numbers are before we had any S or dollars, and those metro average numbers are a little bit higher, class sizes for K5 than they are last year. A number of school districts, ours included, had lower class sizes in order to, using our S or dollars in order to keep class sizes low, because we had lower enrollment, and also to just support students and teachers. And so you'll notice a little bit of a difference between 2019 and 2023. So just, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not a lot, we're still using essentially the same numbers, but they are slightly different. Okay? Any questions about that with the metro average up there? Okay, so our parameters have been that we try and stay at or below the metro average in K through 5. And so you'll notice, if you look at my September 8 numbers, we have average class sizes, kindergarten of 20, first grade of 21.3, second grade of 23, third grade 23.3, fourth grade 23.8, and fifth grade 26.2. And so those numbers are at or below the metro average, except maybe for fifth grade, depending on which number you use, whether you use 26.7 or 25.8, still in a range that's pretty similar. And, and so one thing to note is, a lot of our decisions we make, we start with in January and February. That's the first time that we look at our open enrollment numbers, because that's the first window, and we determine how many students we can accept. We base it on just kind of our historical data, looking at what our numbers are this year, what we expect to happen over the course of the, the summer, and just try and predict based on, on that. You'll also remember that in January, we had a demographic study, and we got some more information about what to expect from, from different, as we get different housing in our community, whether it's homes, apartments, what we can expect from, from that in terms of a ratio. So we use that, too, to try and figure out back in January and February, what we should predict. And from that, then in March, we look at staffing, and we staff and schedule, and work on our staff and schedule. At the elementary level, it's a little bit easier, because it's classroom-based. And so, so the staffing is, really, we just look at our numbers and try and figure out, how many sections do we have, and how many students can we fit? At the secondary level, it's a little harder, because there's licensure, there are choices that students make, there's the scheduling, there's a lot of shared staff between middle school and high school. So I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, about how we go about that, but that one's going to be a little bit different. So at any rate, in our K5, I am recommending that we close enrollment at this point, open enrollment. We may get some, some resident enrollment during the school year, but that third and fourth grade, those are places where we would typically have some, some space, but at this point, I am recommending that we just close K through 5. So I'm going to start with that part. Do you have any questions on that? Because that one's a little bit easier, it's completely based on, on averages. Do you have any comments on that process of using the metro average?
I'll just say, I appreciate you walking through that, and I think that's consistent with our policy and our guidelines, so.
I will just add that, I asked you a question about this, you know, like, for example, like siblings, if there's siblings in our system, and how is that handled? And, and you, you talked to me through that, I don't know if that's helpful for the rest of the board, but like, these decisions have been, the conversations have been happening for months with these families about, about enrolling in their home district and things like that, because of our numbers being so high.
Right. So there is a sibling preference, if there's a sibling that's already in the district, back, for open enrollment, back in January and February, we would look at those families or those students who already have a sibling in the district, and that is one of the, the areas where we, we can accept siblings. As you go through the school year, though--
I just add, because that's state law.
Because that's state law, thank you. As you go through the school year, you might have, or as you go through the open enrollment process, you might have a family come in and, and apply, and some get in and some do not. And that is the case every year, and so then families do have to make the decision whether they want to keep their children in, the ones that got in, and then try again next year for the others. And that's a conversation, so Leslie Lovis does all of our open enrollment conversations with families, and that's something that she explains to them at that time. So she's been having conversations with families who have been on the waiting list, you know, many since January, February time, that first range, and she lets them know what to expect, and can't predict exactly what will happen, but tries to help them make decisions. Okay, anything else on that? Okay. Middle school and high school is a little bit different because of the, the number of choices students have in electives and shared staffing. We've had some questions about the middle school, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about middle school in particular. So middle school, one, the thing, the parameter we're given is that, to follow this team model, is really, it's pretty open in terms of what the board has put out there as a parameter. I tried to provide to you, so since I got this question, I haven't, I haven't updated sheet I'm going to pass out to you, but I'm going to explain it first. So typically, in years past, around, we would have around 830 middle school students, and that would be 10 sections per grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And we have been running 10 sections per grade. Until last year, we had a class, or we have this very small class that is this year in eighth grade. So yeah, so last year's seven, if you look at last year's seventh grade, it's 236 students. We did run nine sections for that class. But you'll also notice last year's sixth grade had 244 students. So the, so what happens when you run 10 sections of 244 students is you have an average class size of 24.4, which is a lot lower than your average class size for elementary. So this year, last year was our last year with our S or dollars. We can't afford to run class sizes at the secondary at that level. And so we did change it to, we have nine sections at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Now, here's the other thing I'd want you to know. Other decisions we make at the secondary level is we typically try to, and, and at the secondary level, is a lot, is there are more leveled classes, more choices. So secondary level, we typically have our, our honors classes, accelerated classes, be a little bit higher than our classes for students who are at grade level, or students who are below grade level need more help. Those classes will be smaller, a lot of times, depending on how the numbers break on all of this, I should tell you. And so when that happens, we will have class sizes that are larger than the average, and then we will have classes that are lower than the average. And so that does happen, and it does happen in middle school, that sometimes if a student is taking an advanced English, an advanced math, and then certain electives, they can end up getting together in these classes throughout the course of the day, in part because of our shared staff. And so we have some staff that teach at the high school, and then they teach at the middle school, and so they can only teach in certain times of the day. So I'd want you to know, that is happening at seventh grade right now. So at seventh, in our seventh grade, we have students who are experiencing smaller class sizes than other students, and some students who are experiencing larger class sizes. I can also tell you that our middle school principal is looking at ways to alter that slightly, but there won't be enormous changes because of the constraints we have on our staffing and schedule. The other thing to know, right now, is that we did have quite a bit of new residents move in this summer, and that also affected our class sizes. Most, we had, most of them are at the secondary level, though we do have them across, across the board. So we had more residents move in than we expected this summer as well. And I bring all that up, because our class sizes at the middle school, again, are, there's a lot of variation to them, but they are bigger than what people experienced last year. But what students experienced last year isn't a model that is, is, it's not sustainable. So I'm just going to show you something here, if I, I'm going to pass these to you. What I did is, I was trying to, and here's, it's very difficult to talk about middle school and high school class, average class sizes, again, because it varies so much depending on the class. So for example, a choir might, a choir or band might be bigger than a, an ensemble class is going to be bigger typically. FIAE can be bigger as a result, because it's opposite that class. So those things do happen regularly. I'm just giving you some context, I did the best I could to, I took science. So what I did is, all of our students, almost all of our students are in science classes, and not, and they are not leveled. And so I picked science as an example to just kind of look to have some comparison from one year to, from 2018 and 2024. So if you look in the top right, I just picked the science averages from 2019, at the middle school level, 29.9, 2023 was 28.7, just to give some context. If you look in 2018, you'll see some average class sizes between 27 points, or no, 26.7 and 29. You can see in 2000, sorry, that was 2018, 2019, somewhere around 27 and 28. You can see where we are right now, and where we were last year as well. So this is all the context I can try to give you on this.
Make sure I have it correct. So in 2018, we had 10 sections. In 19, we had 10 sections.
Correct.
In 2023, we had nine sections, no, 10 sections.
You had 10 sections in sixth and eighth, and nine sections in seventh.
Okay, thank you.
We went with all nine sections.
All, nine sections on all three, okay.
And then we had, we had students move in. Seventh grade, again, is the place where we got some feedback. We did stop open enrollment back in February in seventh grade, thinking we had left space, and then we had moved in. So again, it was, it was not something we planned for, and, and why we are closing enrollment. So we've had families on the waiting list since February in seventh grade, because of that. And we have, we do have, I mean, seventh grade is another, is a, our classes where 10th grade, I'll just give you an example, 10th grade is a place that we, we've taken almost no open enrollment over the past few years, each year that they've been with us. We've had a waiting list for that class, because it's just a bigger class. So in each class, there's just, there's just a variation of how many resident students we have.
So the largest class was in 2018, class size, in grade 8.
And that's, and that's not unusual for middle school. So if you look again at that science, back then, 29.9 was an average class size for, so those aren't unusual. However, it's not what our, it's not what our students and families are used to. That is true. Now with, so, so this year, we have, we do have a variation in our schedule, so we'll have, some students are experiencing class sizes of 23 or 20 in some classes, and others are over 30. And so that is, that is something that's, that is happening this year. So I just wanted to tell you that, because I know you had heard from it. I mean, my goal here is to recommend closing open enrollment, but I also wanted to give you some context for what's happening. Any other questions about middle school, and then I'll talk about high school? Yeah?
Okay, so, once a child in seventh grade is in a big class, and then you look at their 504 or their IEP, and they have accommodations, are those still met, or it's this, I'm sorry, we have a big class?
Always meet, so there, there aren't accommodations written to a 504 that they need to be in a small class, that's not what a 504 is written for. It's to create the classroom accommodations that they need in the classroom, so, which we will always honor. That's, that is what we do. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I do, but go for it.
So my question is, I mean, this makes perfect sense, and obviously, our community and everybody got used to a lot of the COVID dollars and the way we use that, and to lower class size was just one of those ways, but one of the things I was wondering after we got that email or the communication from somebody about class sizes was, you know, maybe even just the space in the room could be utilized differently, because it sounds like we're still right around or under that metro average, and this is not, this was kind of the anomaly of what we did after, during and after COVID, but this is kind of more the norm of what it had been? Is that right? And maybe, you know, I was just, in my brain, when I saw that, I thought, wow, that, maybe we just need to rethink some of the spacing, because the class sizes don't seem like they're drastically larger than they were, it's maybe just what it had been like in the last couple of years.
Yeah, I, yes, that is true. I think you're right about spacing, and I know that was something the principal was working on with the teacher, that is the arrangement of their classroom. So that was one thing. But the other thing is our scheduling, which is something that we need to look at for next year. Again, our, our principal is making some changes, but, you know, in terms of how we share staff, it's been really limiting. Another thing that's been great, but it also is limiting, is our choir directors wanted to split the choirs, so that there is a soprano alto choir and a tenor bass choir, because instruction, they could target some instruction for kids that way. Well, that also is another constraint, then, on the schedule of where students have to be scheduled. So every time we create that kind of opportunity, which is great, it also puts another constraint in the schedule. And so we have more of that this year than we have in the past, in, in particular, because of shared staff.
But the creation of some of those special opportunities for kids, the choirs that lock our schedule, we're meeting student needs, right? So not just for the benefit of the teacher, they're really about personalizing and meeting student needs, and as we do that more, we might run into things that are different for families and teachers and kids, that aren't necessarily bad, they're just different.
Yeah, I, thanks, that's, it, and yes, I think that is something that we can see, and we see it at the high school. I'd, I'd say that one of the things our high school staff are really good at doing is, because we want to offer so many classes that are, say, smaller class sizes, that's what, I'll get into that in a minute, but sometimes they will, you know, have two courses that are in the space at the same time, so that they can honor students who wanted, want to take those courses, but we wouldn't normally be able to run them otherwise, because of staff, you can't staff a class for just five students, or something like that. So there are things that our high school staff are accustomed to doing. I'm not suggesting that a middle school, you know, staff member's going to run two courses at the same time, but I'm just, I offer that as an example of something high school staff.
So I've got two questions, I think, and the first one's going to sound dumb, but I don't think it is. When you say open enrollment is closed, what does that mean? And, and what I'm getting at is, in my mind, I would have thought like, we would have known how many students were coming in to the grades. And so when you say open enrollment is closed, is that just like the sign-up for the waitlist is closed? Does that mean we had more kids come into class here in the first few days than we anticipated? And can you just help me understand, like, foundationally, what that means?
Sure, so we did, well, actually, we did have more students show up on the first day than we anticipated, that is true, but mostly it was during the summer. During the summer, we had more kids move into the district than we expected, so that, by quite a few. So that was surprising. So, yeah, so we had, so we can't, like, if I look at, like, so seventh grade is at 260 this year, last year, it, as sixth graders, it was at 244. And typically, we don't have a lot of students move in, in seventh grade. They typically are sixth, or so our big ones are kindergarten, sixth grade and ninth grade, are where we see a lot of students make a transition. It is not normal for us to have that kind of transition, so that did take us by surprise.
So now that you're recommending the closure of open enrollment, what does that technically mean? That means there's no more waitlist?
Right, well, we, we've already let people know that we're recommending this for tonight, and yes, there wouldn't be a waitlist, it would be that we just, we are not accepting any more open enrolled students for the school year.
Okay, makes sense. And then my other question, and I apologize if you covered this and I just missed it, but you've got the metro average listed through sixth grade.
Through fifth grade.
Is it through fifth?
Yeah, that little one down below is the, yeah, so through fifth grade.
I see, I pushed it down one row there.
Yep.
Do, from a metro average perspective, do we track the average in middle school?
So again, I'll just say, we, yes. Okay, we do track the average, but it's by each class, so, so that's the hard--
I understand that it's not like elementary, I fully grasp that, I'm just trying to understand if the metro average for 2023 is 25, well, see--
No, I'm sorry.
Not at Apple State, I, I'm not making the proper comparison, I get that, but--
If you go down to the science averages, do you see, the science averages? That's the middle school.
Yep.
Those are middle school numbers, and I chose science, because everybody takes--
But those aren't metro averages, those are just Matamida science averages.
No, those are metro, I'm sorry.
Of sixth through eighth?
Yeah, so--
Okay.
The way, so the way the report goes is that it breaks it down by, it'll break it down by just overall, but then it also breaks it down by courses.
Okay.
And because at the secondary level, it's difficult, every district does things differently about, like, where do they pull students who are going to get intervention, from what course? I just had to pick something, and so that's what I chose, because in our district, everyone takes science.
Got it, sorry, the clarification helps.
I was just trying to come up with something to give you context, but again, it is, you know, you'll have really wide ranges, that's typical, too, so.
Okay.
I'm not understanding completely is, like, I get the, I get the average piece, but then what I don't understand is, I know FIAE is going to be different, or band, or choir, like, those are going to be very, could be very different numbers, but in the English, science, social studies, maybe probably even math, like, is there a cap or a number where, like, we're at nine sections, where then it's like, that's just too many? Is there, what's the high number that's too many?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a good question, and we have it every year at the secondary. Like, when do we determine whether or not we have, go to two sections? It's like, we have 34 students in our seventh grade, honors English, and we only have one section, well, two sections is 17. So it's a decision the principals have to make every year, about like, where are we going to spend FTE, because they have a certain amount of FTE, and so where are they, and, and that's like, at the, at the high school level, that was the case as well. And so I could even move into the high school. So a lot of times in the high school level, what we'll look, what we'll see is those required classes, maybe ninth and 10th grade, if they are a required course, those might be a little bit bigger, because the, they're trying to make sure we have end of, end of sequence courses, and those end up being a lot smaller. And so in order to balance it out, it can be kind of challenging. So we want, we want as many students as possible taking Spanish 2 this year, so that we have courses in Spanish 5 at the end. And so that is a, that's a challenge every year to figure out exactly how to do that. We'll say there were some math classes that were going to be over 40 this year, and so we did add some, because again, of these move-ins that we didn't see coming, and we had a part-time teacher who could schedule in to take, take a section. That doesn't always work, but when it does, we try and do that. Sometimes our teachers will teach an overload course, because they can, you know, lessen the impact. So we do things like, those are things that, changes we make, that we can make at the last minute, but can't always, you know, change the entire schedule at the last minute, so.
Is this seventh, is overcrowding the right word, or not? Or just big?
I'd, I'd call it, okay, so context, it all depends on your context.
Okay.
I, it is big, it is big, because we have nine sections, it would not be big if we had 10 sections, it would look different. But then that would be, they would be, you know, smaller, you know, 26, or, you know, which, which is a little bit low, given our, given our funding, so.
Well, that wasn't my question. I just was wondering how to phrase my question. Given the big seventh grade class, and all these points you've made that make it seem much more sense than emails from parents of, do you know how big my student's class is? Has the principal considered a seventh grade email, just highlighting some of these things that parents might not realize happen? I mean, this, I have a seventh grader, so this is just, I'm soaking this all in, and it makes a lot more sense.
I'm not, I'm sure she talks about it when people contact her about it.
Okay.
The other, I mean, the other thing to know is, just having a large class size doesn't, you know, it, I just would recommend everyone just allow the experience to happen. Sometimes a large class, as a former teacher myself, sometimes my largest class was bigger than my smallest class. It, so it's not, at the, once you get to older, the older grades, it's not quite the same experience as the younger grades. And so we purposely keep our small, our small class size early on, that's always been a part of what we do, but at the secondary level, it can, it can vary, experience can vary, depending on the mix of the children.
Deal with it individually.
I would recommend.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Any questions about the high school? I think I went quickly there, but were there questions about that?
So I'm going to not have the percentage accurate, but it's roughly at the high school, like, 30, 33% open enrolled students make up our--
Yeah, I think it's higher at the high school than it is at earlier ages.
I'm just curious, do you have a feel for what percentage of open enrolled kids would make up the middle school population compared to high school? Yeah, I'm not phrasing it properly, but sixth through eighth, there's a certain percentage of open enrolled kids right now, and we're at our capacity, essentially, right? And so do you have a grasp for what that percentage of open enrolled students is as a part of the entire student population in middle school, and then compared that to high school?
Yeah, I don't, I can't answer that question on the fly. I would say that, I, I do know that depending on the grade level, we have different percentages of open enrollment by grade level, and it just is because of, you know, that happens, that's our fluctuation, we're a small district, and so that's going to happen from year to year. Like, again, that 10th grade class is, is mostly, I mean, it's, it's higher resident students than maybe, you know, eighth grade is, or something like that.
The reason I was asking-- The reason I was asking is, is I'm wondering if we're starting to bump up against that ceiling in middle school, is that going to most likely carry over to high school, therefore lowering the percentage of open enrolled kids in those high school classes? I assume that's the case, but is that, does that apply typically?
Yeah, it could, it could. I guess I don't know for sure. I'd, I'd have to look. I would, I would, might be wrong if I wing it there. You know, again, part of sixth through eighth was, was that we did reduce, we did reduce staffing because we had been holding off for so long with really small class sizes, and we just couldn't afford it. You know, we are funded at a lower level than average, and to be funded at a lower level and keep class sizes at a lower level is, is a little bit challenging. And so this was not a, this was not a perfect prediction, I guess. And again, we didn't, we didn't see students coming. But I, you know, know that our staff is working on that, and there'll be some changes. I just wouldn't want to promise big changes for anyone.
Can you just walk through why we need to vote to close it rather than leaving it open? And if kids move out of district, then you have the flexibility and what that brings to, to close it?
I think, one, it communicates to families to let them know that at this point, we're, we're closed because that's always a question parents leave, leaving them hanging on. It's also the case that we have to, if we turn people away, we have to report it to MDE now, and letting them know why we close, it's a board action to share why we, we closed and we turned people away. So in part, it's, it's to also be able to report to MDE.
Barb, how do we answer the, the question from folks? So with the argument that would, well, we've got 30 more kids in those three, let's just pick on sixth, seventh, and eighth. I don't know how many total kids we, we gained, but that means we got X amount of more dollars as well, right? So why couldn't we just use that X amount of more dollars to add a section? Seems pretty simple, but I think that's a question that.
Right. So what we would be doing is adding a section of science, English, math, social studies. You know, we would be going down the road, which means, and at the secondary level, that's all different licensure, which is different than the elementary where there's the one licensure. So you add a classroom, you have one licensure here, it would be a bunch of part-time positions. And it would also require rescheduling a lot of students in order to be able to fit that in. Now, again, at the high school level, we were able, we had a part-time teacher who was free, that we could schedule in to take care of those, those kids that were, where we had class size over 40. It happens sometimes, and we're, when we're able to do it, we can do it. And we're looking at that in a couple of our classes at the middle school. But it, but to completely do it is something that we really need to do earlier on in March.
So it's fair to say that certainly the dollars that we generate from the state aren't sufficient to meet that need. Secondly, it's also a timing issue as well, right?
And staff, yeah, staffing, it's pretty significant.
Someone who's been in here longer, Lucy, are the MSBA coffee and conversations recorded those Tuesday mornings? It's just free talking and then it's gone forever? Okay. Well, last Tuesday was a lively discussion on open enrollment, so too bad, you can't go back and watch it. But I do have two pages of notes. It was just nice to have all these different districts chiming in on open enrollment. So it, we ran out of time. It was, let's continue this again.
Those of you who look historically, and Stacy was here for this as well, she will remember that this is not a new conversation. We have this conversation every couple of years. The classic graduating 2018, when they were in middle school, they were going through some of the same things, or they were a big class. They all did wonderfully. I know many of those students, they did great, right? It was a big class, it had high open enrollment. It fluctuates, and we have worked really hard as a board to move away from having our fingers down in the weeds where we don't belong, to trusting the work and the knowledge of the team and bringing us the data information so we can close when it's appropriate. Because there's sometimes we shouldn't close, and there's many times we don't close. We used to close every single year, all grades, right? And we haven't had to do that for a while because of the way our administration has been able to balance open enrollment and work in that communication. And so it is different for many of you, being newer to the board, to have this come about, but, I mean, Stacy can speak to this. We have done this many, many times. This is not the first time, this is not the first group of parents or kids who've had larger class sizes. It's not a bad thing, it's just a different thing, right? They have more opportunities to interact with a wider variety of kids. They get more opportunities in other classes because of it. I mean, it's all really important because I think about, yeah, if we were to add a section, then what do we have to lose or cut to make that happen? And those cuts would be deep, and those cuts would be painful, right? And so it's not ideal. Yes, if we could afford it, if the state funded us appropriately, we would have smaller class sizes. They don't. And this is why all the work we do with MSBA, AMSD, all the lobbying we do down at the Capitol is so very important because we're a small district and we get trapped and locked in in a different way than those very large districts because they have a lot more flexibility because our numbers are so much bigger. So when they end up with 10 extra kids, right, it doesn't have the same ripple effect that we do. I also want to clarify that Barb keeps saying she didn't plan for this. You can never plan enrollment. It's not something you get to plan for. It's something that happens, and we don't know how it's going to happen every year. So I appreciate you saying you didn't plan for it, but Barb, you can't plan for it because we can never know who is moving into our district, who is moving out, who is choosing something different for their students who's choosing to come back. We can't plan, we get to react, and we can look at historical data, and I'm running the numbers of the gains and things like that, but there's so many factors there that you cannot 100% plan for enrollment.
True. And we, we do have some ways to predict, yes.
Some general predictions, but not exact numbers, and 10 kids makes a difference.
Thank you for sharing that. The last thing I was going to say for our parameter for the high school, and I forgot to say this, is that we've been using that right-size study that was done quite some time ago, and it was, we used to just call it 1,200, but really, when I read the right-size study, it's between 1,150 and 1,200. So I updated that in the parameters, and we are right in that range. And I think it's important to talk about it as a range in part because, again, of all the electives that we have at the high school. And so right now, for example, we have, we just have, if students came in and wanted certain, you know, certain courses, we just wouldn't be able to provide that. And in particular, our ninth and 10th grade. Well, we have, in every grade, we have some, some classes that are, that are pretty high, and so that's in part also why I'm, I'm looking at that. So with that, I am recommending that you approve the resolution related to closing open enrollment for 24, 25.
Director Domon, Donna? Did you second it?
I was going to ask a question.
Oh, we can. Can somebody second it? Seconded. Seconded by Director Peterson. Discussion?
Thank you. This is a question for Barb and the broader board here, but it sounds like that right-size study was done quite some time ago. Is, is it potentially the right time to do the study again and potentially look at open enrollment from a broader, like, board perspective, of course, but also get feedback from the community on what they would like to see from a, an enrollment size and class size and that sort of thing?
Can I just say, so we have talked about that, and I think it is something that we plan to look at this year.
I know that we're going to do a right-size study, though.
No, but we can talk about it as a board to determine how we got here so everyone can get up to speed.
And I'll just say, the reason I said that quickly about the study is because that was somebody, somebody was doing their masters, and so they had, they had to do, they had to do a project, and they made this their research. And so it was free. Otherwise, it will, it will cost something to do some kind of study like that.
Or maybe we look at other districts, and we have some kind of a comparison tool or something like that. But I think we are going to delve into it as a board so that everybody who wasn't here during that time.
Yep. Great.
And I hope that when the board dives into that work, it's not the right-size study because the right-size study only looks at the high school, right? And you need to look at the broader context, not only the high school. And so it's not the right-size study that needs to be redone. It's looking at the size and scope of the district and what you all want to be in this time and space.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Potential refinancing options. Director of Finance. Hello?
Is that green right now? You have to turn on underneath, there's a button.
Thank you. Good evening. So on the agenda tonight was the potential funding or refinance, refunding opportunities for, for a bond issue that we talked about a little bit. And continuing to work with Lers on some different options. And then, as you're probably aware, we added a finance committee, board finance committee meeting for next Monday. And so with that, we'll be able to, the plan is to bring about three to four different options for the finance committee to review, and then also review a parameters resolution that we've talked a little bit about. Finance on a committee level, we'll be able to get a little more into a little more detail and as far as reviewing these different options. And then my hope is finance will come out of that with a recommendation and then bring that to the board on the board's, regular board meeting on the 23rd for action. Right now, we still, we're still in a good shape, you know, as far as having a lot of opportunity to get a lower rate. So that would be the, the recommendation. And so then tonight, we just ask that you table that item until the 23rd.
Like a motion?
Questions? Yeah. Does anyone have questions? So a motion to table?
I'd move to table, item 4B till, to the 23rd.
Second?
By Director Donna, seconded by Director Domon. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, this is the table.
Okay. We'll talk about.
Thank you.
So have for you in your folders, the draft of our portrait of a graduate. And I've talked a little bit with you about how to kind of process this. I'll just kind of go back again to the process that we used and then help you walk through this document. So back in, so this came out of our strategic planning process, asking for the district to define success in multiple ways. And this is the product of initially some conversations that we had with, with community members who supervise or hire employees, or also who are in the military or in higher education. And we asked them questions about what they were looking for in, in their employees or people they supervise. And we used that to determine, to, so we used their feedback, we processed that feedback, we worked through a number of different groups, including administrators and teachers. And then I also brought it back to the White Bear Area Chamber, put together a group of the area business leaders to process this with us too. So what you see here is the result of all of those groups coming together and giving us feedback on what we want to see in a graduate. Now, when we, I'm going to take you through this, and I want to just point out that this is not, and you have an extra copy for our one audience member. This is not intended to be something where we have all students achieve all things at high levels, but in other, but for us to have students be able to find themselves in each of these areas, discover their strengths, areas that they need to work on, and be really reflective on how they can put themselves out into their, on their best path forward using these areas of Portrait of a Graduate. So here's what I want to do, just to help you process. I want you to start by covering it up and just looking at the six areas. Six areas are collaborator, communicator, ethical, global citizen, innovative thinker, self-aware and self-directed. Why don't you think of two children that you know well? What, where would you consider their strengths when you think of them? Just by looking at those big, where would you see that they might have some area for growth? Are they the same? When you thought of it, your two students, your two children, that they have strengths in the same area? And that's going to be the case for all of our children. They're going to all have different strengths, different areas that they need to work on. For the next one, you'll see that we have, we have the description to give a little bit more to go on. So for a collaborator, collaborator strategically uses talents and brings out the strengths in others to work together for positive outcomes. Communicator, expresses ideas clearly and concisely for various purposes and audiences. Ethical demonstrates integrity, trust, and accountability in actions. Global citizen possesses the ability to navigate diverse cultural, economic, environmental, and political landscapes effectively. Innovative thinker applies both creative and critical thinking to design and evaluate possibilities. Self-aware and self-directed possesses the ability and confidence to take an active, purposeful role in their learning. And that's agency that we've talked about many times. So again, think of the students that, or the children that you were thinking of. Where are their strengths? Feel free to write if you want to. Where are their strengths? Where are some areas that you think they might need support? Just as you're thinking of the children that you have in your head, know that we would do this with our students too, to help them reflect on these areas. Where do they have strengths and where do they need support? The last part here, the skills and dispositions, and I won't read all of these out, but remember the, the idea here, these are aspirational areas for each of our students as a graduate. So a fifth grader, there might be some things in here that a fifth grader can connect with, but not all of them, for sure. There might be some areas that a middle school student could connect with, but this is intended to be written for graduates. And then what we'll do is work with our secondary staff on this and then bring it down to figure out at the lowest level, how can we start growing, growing these skills in students in a developmentally appropriate way that allows them to build on their foundations until they are in high school where they're able more to demonstrate and reflect on where they're going? And use this in a way that they can put themselves in a situation so that when they leave us, they are more self-aware and more able to talk about their strengths and areas that they need support in because they've had experience practicing this and presenting it and talking about it. So that's the intent of this. Did you have questions on any of it? And I know I've kind of talked with a couple of you already and shared this before, so it's not your first time seeing it necessarily. Maybe you've had time to process because there's a lot here. And before I ask for questions again, I'm just going to also say, we're not planning to just roll this out as a sheet of paper that we hand people, but we'll be pulling it apart and talking about it in different ways. But this is the, this is the comprehensive document that puts it all together, and then we'll be pulling it apart more digestible.
I have a couple of questions, and it's more along the bullet points, the skills and dispositions, and knowing that your team is going to unpack all of this and what that looks like at different grade levels and things like that. But my, when you asked me to think about a couple of students, I thought about my... But my, when you asked me to think about a couple of students, I thought about my students who graduated and then I'm thinking about my two students who are still in the system. And it made me think about things like, for example, some of their strengths they had, but coming through our system and then some of the things that they're learning as a young adult now. And so one of those things that, I don't know that you were asking for our feedback, but it popped into my head and I just, are you open for any feedback on any of these bullet points or is this not the time or place for that?
I don't know, potentially, but I want you to know how many people have worked on this. So, okay, but go ahead, give it a run.
Well, I feel as though I.
So many people, no, go ahead.
So what you're saying is, so, so under global citizen, for example, so one of the things that I, I mean, I like a lot of these, all of these things are really fantastic things in here and demonstrate civic responsibility. And, you know, to me, this feels like a good yes and to how our students graduating from our system can participate in that global economy. So participating, you know, they're going to probably potentially leave Matamidi and maybe even our state and maybe even our country and thinking about like, where does that fit under these skills and maybe think about that? So that was one. And then I had a question on one, the rec, under innovative thinker, recognizes patterns, trends and interdisciplinary connections. I wasn't, I don't really feel like I understand what that means in relation to innovative thinking. I'm not saying you have to answer that now, I'm just.
Oh, okay.
We can even talk about it in a one-on-one or whatever, but I just was curious because I didn't really understand why that fit there. So.
I'm going to jump in with my opinion if that's okay. Kelly, when I think about that, because our schools have been siloed, as you know, right? So we've got all the silos going, we've got a math class, we've got a science class, we've got all these silos. And we have lost the ability to see and learn and be innovative in pulling something from one discipline into another to think about things differently. And there are a lot of things when I think, my area being mathematics, I can think of a lot of things in mathematics that I automatically transfer over to other academic areas. And that innovative thinking is what our students need to be able to do because the world is not in the same silos our high school is. And so it's getting them to see that whole world picture to me. And from that, they can be innovative in thinking because they're not only thinking about, oh, in this one class, this one thing, all I can talk about is math. I can look across and see how math is influencing other things and pull those pieces. And then that allows them to do things differently and innovatively that we haven't done before.
Okay, so in my quotation marks, I wrote, is that real, real world exploration or real world learning, right? So I can tie what I've learned in the classroom to things in the real world. And then, oh, this isn't just something I learned in math, but this is something I can combine with what I learned in math, to science, to, relatable to something that they would experience in real life. That was what I wrote down, but then I was like, I don't know if I'm trying to read into this too much.
Okay, so I will say, as a mathematician, this is, this is one of those ones where when you can recognize patterns and trends, it allows you to think more, think more broadly about new ideas because you're able to be analytical about noticing patterns and trends. So this is kind of a combination of both creative thinking and analytical thinking because patterns and trends can really inform your ability to think much bigger because it, and make connections in other discipline areas. So I would say it's not real world thinking necessarily because it can be really abstract thinking that you're taking and you're applying to some, a different discipline. It's not necessarily always a real world. It's my two cents. But this is, I will tell you that this is the one, this innovative thinker is the one that gave us the most challenge because we have so many different ways, we had a lot of different thinkers in the room. So we had people who are more creative and we had more analytical people. And the creatives and the analyticals had to come together to find the best words that combined the two. So it's just funny because this is the one that we had a lot to talk about.
I look at them and think about habits of mind. And to me, you're using the habits of mind in the skills and dispositions, which helps, I think, connect all those pieces together.
This is not a light document. There's a lot to think about.
With a lot of good stuff together.
And I think it's important to note that all of this gets tied into the actual subject learning that they're doing and how it makes that, that experience more, just brings more depth to that and then takes them into the world in a way that it's more meaningful.
So it's a subject learning and it also allows students, you know, a lot of our, we know in our community that the, the extracurriculars that our students do, whether it's music, sports, our clubs, there is a lot of important learning that happens in all of those areas too that build some of these skills and dispositions that allow students to position themselves for global success as well. If you think of students who are applying, doing graduate, or applying for colleges, for example, they're pulling in a lot of their experiences from beyond the classroom as well. And so if they can find those, can talk about these skills and dispositions from things that they've learned in other areas, that also supports their work. And so it's really an opportunity to really think about, about a much broader, students is beyond just the classroom, so.
One last point, and that is the World Wide Economic Forum comes up with the skills, the top skills that our students should know. So right now, the ones that they're saying by the year 2027, they want to see from our students who are leaving our K-12 systems and doing something post-secondary or, or working out in the workforce or whatever that might be. The number one skill is creative thinker. So I love that that's in the description here under innovative thinker. I guess that was my key point here of like, making that, sure that creativity is a part of this because this is what's being asked of our kids when they leave our system. Not necessarily just the facts about, what did you learn in social studies or in science or math? But how can you think creatively?
All right, well, we're going to keep moving forward with it and I just wanted to have an opportunity for you to see what we've been working on.
Okay, and teaching and learning fall data presentation with Dr. Reichel.
So tonight, I'm going to do an overview, a data review. I'm going to start by re-engaging us in the concepts of satellite map level and street level data. And then I'm going to take some time to overview our current satellite data. We'll talk about our MCAs, about some ACT data and our advanced placement data. And all of that will set the stage for a discussion about what you all as school board members need and want with regard to our data. So. Okay, I don't know if you did that or if I did that, but, okay. So when we look at those three forms of data, that satellite data is our highest level broad data. We typically gather that information one time per year. And what that data does is it shows us district, school-wide or grade level patterns of achievement. The beauty of this data and the challenge of satellite data is it points us in the general direction for further investigation, but it's often lagging and it's difficult to inform quick pivots in instruction. And some examples of satellite level data are standardized and internal, sorry, external test scores. MCA, ACT, AP are all examples of that satellite data. Attendance patterns and graduation rates are also examples of that satellite level data. The map level data is our assessments or evidence that we typically gather three to four times per school year. So it might show that grade level, classroom or student group centered patterns of achievement. And that data really helps us to identify some skill gaps. So our examples in our district, we use the NWEA map test at our middle school, FastBridge at our elementary, and those are screening scores. Some common unit assessments and portfolios can be used as map level data. Our street level data can be multiple times daily where we are doing some of those informal check-ins. It shows real-time student group and individual student blend of quantitative and qualitative data that helps our teachers make those shifts in instructional plans. And the challenge with street level data is it's really challenging to generalize and give you nice, neat charts and graphs because it is so individualized. Some examples of street level data are exit tickets, classroom discussions, feedback surveys, progress monitoring scores, teacher observations and daily assignments. Before I move away from this comparison, what questions might you have for me about satellite map level and street level data?
I have a question on the map level data. So NWEA is for middle school, MAP and FastBridge are for elementary. What do we have for high school?
So NWEA map is all one thing.
Oh, okay.
To the company and the name of the assessment. FastBridge is for elementary. We don't have a standardized screening at the high school. Part of the reason for that is oftentimes those screening data points that we gather really plateau as kids are reaching the end of middle school. And those school-wide tests really, we're balancing that time on a test versus their utility. And so usually the data that we'd want to gather at our high school is going to be more targeted towards smaller groups of students and not school-wide screening data. Having said that, we are waiting for some guidance from MDE connected to the REDACT and we will likely have to do some form of screener for those students who are not yet proficient in the area of literacy. And that for us might prompt some additional conversations about how we assess at a large scale at our high school.
So at the high school, or does anyone have follow-up? So for the high school, we really only have the satellite level and the street level?
No, because our teachers have common unit assessments. And that's how, as a PLC, a professional learning community, they might be looking at in math. In this particular course, we're going to look at this end of unit, unit assessment. And that's going to help us understand, hey, we see some skill gaps in this area, we see some strengths here and that's going to help us dig a little bit deeper. But it isn't data that's easy to share, like public wide because it's so departmentalized. Good, all right, thank you, great questions. All right, so we're going to begin with MCA scores. As you likely remember, MCAs, Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, are required assessments for students across the state of Minnesota. It is not a Matamidi specific thing. Beginning in grade three, we don't do MCA tests in grades K-1 and 2. Beginning in grade three and concluding in high schools, students take MCAs in the spring of each year. The reason I didn't say specific grades is because it looks slightly different at the high school depending on the assessment. As I've shared before, the MCAs give an indication of the health of our system and points in the general direction of further study. We saw scores in both reading and math hold steady from 2023 to 2024, both at the state and within our district. And so now I'm going to head into the actual data. So when we look at math scores, the way that you can see this, the yellow scores are the state averages. And you can see we progressed 2019. The reason we don't have data in 2020 and 2021 is because of the pandemic. We didn't do MCAs in 2020. And in 2021, there was much flexibility about opting into that assessment. And so the data that we have really isn't statistically viable when we look at trends. And then we begin again in 2022, 23 and 24. So the yellow is the state average. The dark blue next to the yellow is all of our grades. And for math, students in grades three through eight and again in 11 take the MCAs. And then the lightest blue is OH. Middle school is slightly darker and the high school is the darkest yet, but not quite as dark as the district as a whole. Those are, thank you for that. Those are the percent of students who met that proficiency. So as you likely recall, the MCAs name a score and they can be in one of four levels. They can be, does not meet, partially meets, meets and exceeds. And so we combine that meets and exceeds into one data point saying they've met that proficiency. Any child with a score that is, does not meet or partially meets then is not part of that group.
Why is that different than all straights?
Oh, it does go with the, the, that's OH.
It's OH.
Oh, yeah, I had to adjust them because in 2019, when they were in the sweet spot of where everything else was, they were all squished together.
I even looked at this earlier when it came out and I still did not put that together. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, that is a little bit weird that they're so much higher. All right.
Are you, do you want a question or do you want to wait?
I'm happy to do however you would like to.
I can wait, go ahead.
Oh, study session, you're free for all, right? I'll head to, to reading and then we'll pause at MCAs. For reading, it's the same orientation of scores. The yellow is the state average, the dark blue is our all grades three through eight and 10. And then we see each of the schools. One thing that I would like to share is that when we look at, with MCAs, again, it's intended to be that satellite level data. And so the smaller the group, the more fluctuation there is. So if you're looking at an individual child's score, the range in the standard measurement of error is quite large. And so we try to make these as big of groups as we can while still making the data meaningful. So when we look at the high school, there's only one grade level. So when we see those changes, there's a much smaller number of kids taking those assessments. And so, you know, a few scores up or down will change those percentages. Where when we look at OHA in the middle school, we just have more students in that group. And that, the percentages then balance out some of those highs and lows of changes. Okay, what questions do you have about MCAs?
So when I looked at this ahead of time, I didn't feel excited, I'm just going to put it that way. I don't know how to say it other than be that blunt. And I'm sure you probably had the same feeling. And seeing that obviously we're staying relatively the same, but obviously we want to see growth. And I know there's been a lot of things put into place to try different things and interventions and things like that. And what's working, what's not working, where are we going to the drawing board again? Because we need, maybe need to rethink some things, that's one thing. I don't expect you to answer it today, I'm not saying that, I just, I'm curious. Then the second part is, this is not tied to MCAs, but I think it's indirectly just how students perform in general. Obviously, we have a huge, we had a pandemic in the middle, a lot happened. There's a lot of things that cause the numbers the way that they are. I'm more curious for us to dig into and have a conversation another time about the trends of like, our district and other districts with summative and formative assessment and the percentages of what's summative, what's formative and those sort of things. And the fact that like, that was a big thing in that, in that change to the 80/20 and, and like, is that working? Is that impacting how students are performing? And the reason why I say that indirectly, maybe relating to MCA is, I think about, this is like a high pressure day. This is like a big day. And like, if a student performs well on a test and, or same sort of thing with the summit informant. I'm not saying we unpack any of that today. I'm just more curious as, kind of what other schools just are doing. Are they sticking with that model? That was a big change, what, like 10 years ago? I don't know. When that was a big push to schools to make that change? And because of COVID and because of where the situation we're at, is there something else that schools are doing that is impacting how students perform on a big summative-type test? Because, again, like I said when I started this, of course, we're all hoping for growth. But because we're not seeing, we're seeing relatively staying the same, and in fact, some decline, it makes me concerned about what do we need to do to look at things differently as a district?
Here's what I really appreciate about what you've said. So I shared with you in that first slide that our satellite-level data is really giving us an opportunity to point to generally, where do we need to look deeper? So I appreciate those questions, and those are the questions that are driving that instructional leadership teamwork that I will come back in later October to do my World's Best Workforce Report and talk about that. But these are the kinds of questions that those groups are digging into and trying to figure out what other data do we have that can help us point to those root causes or what, what is making a difference? And so truly, this is a great time to ask those kinds of questions so that I can make sure that our teams are investigating those questions as they dig into their school level and grade level data. Ryan?
So, questions and comments, I guess. I guess the first thing is I tend to agree with Kelly, right? Like, a little surprised to see that we've been kind of flat. So I'd love to unpack that more and try to understand what the theory is or why we think that might be happening, why we think there may not be as much growth as I think we all were hoping for. But more specifically, whether it's math or reading, the OH data is probably the one that sticks out the most. Math is actually declining at OH. And then specifically, the reading is down six points from 2019 and trending in that direction. Obviously, as a district, we made a pretty significant investment in our literacy tools. So I guess my first question specific to OH is, do you have any idea or theory why we're trending in that direction or any guesses at this point? And then the second question would be, do we have a feel that we should start to see some type of improvement from a reading perspective with the investment we made with the literacy tool in, at Wildwood? Like, those kids should be coming through OH here in the next few years, right? So in my brain, that would signal improvement, right?
Yeah.
Just curious if you have any thoughts there?
Yeah. So the, the thing that I'm seeing when I look at trends, part of what I do is not only look at our data, but I look at the data of other school districts. And we get information from the state. And this is a trend across the state, is that stagnation of data. And I think it's challenging to hear that we continue to feel the impact of the pandemic. We saw from our earliest learners who had, you know, challenges with not having that integration with their peers, to that change in school time foundational skills. And so unfortunately, the, what the research is suggesting is that we're going to see this stagnating trend for quite some time. And it's playing out like that in our comparable districts and in the districts around us. I know that isn't comforting to hear that, well, we're just like everybody else because we want to make sure that we're doing right by our kids and we want to do the very best job that we can. And it is the reality that this is how it looks for, for many of the districts that, in the state of Minnesota. When I think about, when should we see the return on investment that we're doing for literacy? We know that typically when there are implementations of new programs or resources, that there's often a dip in our data. And this year, we're, we're implementing a new literacy resource. Last year, we did an implementation of UFLY. So I don't know when we're going to see the return on investment, but I am confident that we are going to see an improvement, particularly in our literacy skills because of the, the knowledge that our elementary teachers have. Know that with our letters professional learning, we have a whole nother year of learning that's going to be next year in order for them to have the comprehensive PD that's expected from the REDACT statutory language. So we've more work to do, and we're, we have a plan for that. We've got our roadmap set out, and we're working on that across the board as far as, you know, when are we bringing on our secondary folks? We're waiting for the state to give us some guidance as to what that professional learning looks like. The hard part is I don't, I don't know.
It's a, it's a next to impossible question to answer. I get that. I guess the only thing I would take exception with is, when you look at the state average, they've stayed pretty level since 2022. And we've taken a, a pretty significant step back at OH, right? So it's not like we're even flat. We're trending in the wrong direction.
I would just follow up on that. So I, I appreciate that we have a really good literacy roadmap and plan. What, do we have an action plan set for math? And also, we don't have science included here, so I'd like to hear about science.
Yeah. So with math, we have new standards that have come out from the state, and that usually is the catalyst for the, the work that I do with teams. So last year was the first year that I started meeting with our math department to help them understand what were the shifts that are coming in the state standards. There are a number of years before those new standards will be implemented. The, the challenge is when you're asking a system to change. Our elementary folks are doing a lot of work with literacy. It's really hard to ask our same elementary folks to also do a heavy lift with our math. And so we're going to play out our literacy, and I will likely focus more of our continuous improvement at the secondary level in our math so that I can be mindful of the capacity of our teachers at the elementary with regard to math instruction.
What about science?
Oh, thank you. So this data that I shared with you, or that I'm sharing with you tonight, when I looked at MCAs, we were looking at the assessments that are part of our, oh, gosh, my word.
Accountability.
Thank you. Accountability data. Science is not an accountability data assessment. I can come back in October and share with you science information.
I think that would be good. And especially if they're not looking the way we want, then what is our, what steps are we taking to improve it?
I guess I just want to circle back to the comment I made earlier because I think now that I said that out loud, it didn't totally make sense about the summative and formative and the tie to the MCA. And what I'm thinking along the lines of the, you know, if, if something is 80/20 and 20% formative at our secondary schools, if I don't care as much as a student about the, the formative because I'm like, I care about those five unit tests or whatever that might be because that matters so much, I just wonder if that, and I'm not saying all students don't care about, but I just think that I have seen from my own four kids going through school, they care maybe less than they do of those summatives, knowing that the weight is placed on there, that if that mentality adds up to then you only care about those big things, then does that impact our overall MCA scores and the fact that they're studying to the test, to the big test? And that's, that's where I was trying to go with it, and I don't think I articulated that at all.
I think I was following you, though. Yeah. No, you're good.
So I too, I'm, I'm concerned just seeing the numbers and not seeing a positive trend. But I think what, what I might be more concerned about is, we've had the, you know, you, you mentioned that this is our opportunity to really dig in and evaluate and kind of look at what we can do better, et cetera. We've had that opportunity in 2022. We've had that opportunity in 2023. What, what do we need to do? If, if we are on board that this is, this is a tool to, to use to help prepare our kids for the future, what do we need to do to see a positive trend going forward? We've got, we've got data here, and it's flat. Yeah, I don't think you're going to come up with that answer right now, but I think we need to find that answer or put together a plan to find that answer.
Ryan took most of the words out of my mouth, except for, or in addition to. So with the, the decodable books, all those tens of thousands of dollars that we were granted, plus the REDACT, plus UFLY, the next OH tests should, I mean, this should all work. And we are hoping the OH, especially because those Wildwood kids, right, the next two, three, the next third, fourth, and fifth graders, that's what we were hoping for with all of this Wildwood Elementary money and time?
So our current third graders, who will take the MCA assessment in the spring, will have had their very first year of UFLY, which we know is, we improve over time. So, but they have had their first year of UFLY and will have access to decodable books at least partway through the school year last year. So over time, we will definitely see, as kids come through OH, having had more instruction that's aligned with the science of reading, more access to those decodable books, more access to the best practices of those resources in UFLY and Witten Wisdom. Yes, I agree. They should.
And because we can't see it right now in MCA data, are you seeing it in that street-level data? That, that there, these progresses are happening?
Yes. The, the, the qualitative data. And by that, I would say, when Judy Livingston, our literacy coach, talks to me about what she's seeing in the small groups that she's working with the high school tutors who come over and are helping with our kinders, learning some of those initial pieces, that they are doing those practice drills, and then they're mastering that content. When I talked to our Wildwood and, well, our Wildwood teachers last year with UFLY, when they are talking about the growth that they're seeing of kids who understand the, how to put words together and take them apart, which leads to that word and sentence and paragraph reading, they're amazed at what their kids are able to do. So yes, and they're not at the MCAs yet.
And does that transfer or translate to math or other subjects in terms of being able to see improvements or progress?
I have not done that analysis, but I can certainly jot that down as a question.
I just mean street-level data. Sorry, Kelly, I ran off.
So when I looked at this, I, I shared with you just kind of my gut feeling or reaction. My bigger gut reaction to this beyond, I mean, not just Matamidi schools, but just as the state, Matamidi, and then some, is we only have 13 years with these kids. And so we don't have a lot of opportunity for, there's no redos, and there's not a, and so that's, that's what worries me, and I worry so much about, I know the OH data has been brought up, but I actually worry more about our kids in high school right now when I look at the reading scores and, and those things. That, that's very alarming to me in Matamidi and across the state, that those kids are going to be, in a sense, independently doing their own math and reading and working in the world. And that, this, that's the part that we, we're looking at like a third of our kids. Or, and we're looking at like, you know, the state, half of the state. And anyway, that part to me is, is very concerning that we just have such a short timeframe. The OH, I'm not saying we should play around and fix it slowly because we have more time, but high school, we really don't have time.
Going to move on. If you think of things, you certainly can ask. So the next set of data that I want to talk about is our ACT data. So one of the things that we do is we use the Minskew and Minnesota State Colleges and Universities benchmarks for proficiency. And they note that math level of 22, reading 21, and English at 18 are typically what they see as kids coming into the state, the, the college and university system are at least likely to need some lower-level classes. So they're on track for college readiness. So when we look at our data, because students take, some students take the ACT at multiple times, it's really hard to just put that into one chart. So for ease of reporting, we take a look at the one sitting for the ACT when the juniors take the test in April at our school. It's our controlled environment. If we were to look bigger picture, we wouldn't have the whole picture because some students take their assessments well into their senior year. And so this is how we can standardize the assessment. So 87% of our students, total student population, took the ACT in 2024. 93% tested in 2023, and 95% tested in '22. That's just context for you as far as how many students choose to assess. Since the pandemic in 2020, many colleges and universities stopped using the ACT, which might be a reason why we have seen a decline in the number of students who choose to sit for the assessment because it's just not, for some, not worth their time to take the test, even though it's at school and it's free. And many students beyond the pandemic have remained test optional. There are conversations happening with some of those elite universities of whether or not they bring back ACT as part of their admissions package. And that's just going to play out how it does. But that's the, the foundational context for ACT. So in the next chart, you'll see that the yellow with the stars are the percentage of students who are meeting all three Minskew benchmarks. And then the chart at the top will tell you that math is the darkest blue with circles, English, which is really more of that editing piece. It's grammar and, and punctuation. Those, that's the lightest blue with the triangle. And then reading and comprehension is the middle blue with the square. So again, this represents juniors who took the ACT during that April high school administered test. And off to the side, I've listed again those Minskew benchmarks. As with all satellite data, this again gives us an opportunity to ask questions so that we can dig into other data that might help us provide answers to those questions. What questions do you have?
Do we always use the Minnesota State benchmarks?
As far as, since I've been here, Christina Boyce, who has been putting data together for us for many years, that's the marker that she has consistently used prior to me coming in.
Okay.
Thank you for including ACT scores. Is this the first time we've evaluated or compared them? I don't remember. We have in the past.
ACT scores, I think, have been in, when I did the Teaching and Learning newsletter, that was, that was a part of it, but it was a tiny little square on one of the pages.
I mean, what I take away is it's a similar trend compared to the MCAs, right? Lower than we were pre-pandemic. And it doesn't appear as if there's a positive trend. That's what I take away. Yeah, that's my comment.
Just as some additional context for ACT, we've seen nationally a decline. So they look at test scores in ranges, and there has been a decline in scores in the ranges of 16 to 19, 20 to 23, and 24 to 27. And across the nation, a significant increase in scores in the 1 to 15 range. All other ranges have really held steady. So if we look at that super-high end, that's pretty much it, where they've held steady. It was, as I looked at that particular bit of research, that 1 to 15 decrease was, or increase in the number of students who score in that range, it was much higher than the decline in those other three ranges. it was much higher than the decline in those other three ranges. When we look at Minnesota data, it's a different report shows that over the past four years, we really saw as a state, a decline in the number of students meeting multiple benchmarks. And when we look at at least the last two years, we've seen a step, you know, that steady and not a decline. We know that we're not where we were before. I appreciate that we're not trending like we see nationally and as a state and just keep dropping.
Good point.
Does it cause you concern or do you feel like we're, you're, internally, the steps are there or we're just, we've got to re, reassess some things? Like where, how do you, when you look at it, do you think, nope, we're going to, like the literacy, you know, those things just haven't taken place yet. But for the other areas, do you feel like, nope, we've got the right things in place? Or are you thinking, we've got to reassess and change some things?
So if I had a magic wand, I would want to change what we look at for satellite data, like satellite level data. I think about our portrait of a graduate and how that really encompasses what we are looking to grow in our student body. And when we can see students over time building portfolios and showing that evidence, being able to somehow analyze that at a bigger picture will give us data that's meaningful. These are the things that we really want to see in our students. And, and I think there is, um, an internal innate sense of value with kids to see that sort of growth in themselves. I, anecdotally, our high school teachers are sharing that, you know, when they watch students take the test, there's just a lack of engagement in those standardized tests because it's not for them. It doesn't, for many kids, it doesn't do anything for them. Where the ACT for those kids who are, um, you know, looking to go after scholarships and for some schools who may consider the ACT, it's a meaningful assessment. For many, it's not a meaningful assessment anymore because it's not that you have to earn this score in order to get into this university. It's, it's more of a financial aid assessment than it, than it used to be.
I think even with the portrait of a graduate, we still want to see that subject material at, above proficiency and trending, you know, on the right trend. So in terms of it, those improvements or hoping to see those improvements, are we, are we taking all the right steps? Or, or does there need to be a reassess?
Maybe I'll jump in a little bit here. Um, I, at the, and I think we're mostly talking about, we're talking about a few things here. I'm, you know, we're talking about the literacy, which I think we've talked enough about, right? Are we talking mostly at the second, if I, math? So our math curriculum that we use, um, K5, I am surprised by the scores in math in, at OH because we do have a really strong curriculum, um, K5 in, uh, math. And I do wonder, I, so questions I might have are, did we have some teachers who are new to teaching the curriculum this past year? We do oftentimes, when you see, um, new teachers with the curriculum that we have, it, there is a bit of a learning curve with it because, um, it's more conceptual based. And if you're trained as a, in a traditional way, you might not, um, it takes, takes a year or so to get the hang of it. So, so I am surprised by our OH math. And so there are, I mean, I know that they're looking at that and, and also talking about, are they hitting all the standards? So it's not that students aren't learning meaningful math. It might be that they didn't hit all the standards the way they should have this past year. So truthfully, I'm not super concerned about, I think that's going to take, I think they're going to look at it. That's a, um, an area where I think we have a lot of, um, expertise within the building. And I think there's an opportunity to work together to, to right that ship there. Um, I know our middle school, um, our middle school math staff really, um, saw a need for more intervention for students last year and they started going after that, um, in the spring. And I would anticipate doing more of that this year. They did a lot more after school opportunities with kids. Um, and that came up more in the spring, but I think we'll see that even more now. So that's, you know, with middle school, I think that's the case. I will say that, um, I know the middle school math teachers are, have been working more on retakes and more formative work to, um, set that back on, um, track for the MCA. I think the ACT, if I, um, when we look at the trends, I do think it's really impacted by the fact that it wasn't, um, I mean, it wasn't a test that was required in our district. We have a lot of students who take that test multiple times before the time they take it, um, in April. So that, that used to be the case. It was not as much the case these past couple of years, not as many kids were taking the test. So, um, I do know that, um, that had, that definitely had something to do with it. However, so all, all that, um, is to say that we do have, we do have work to do on all of this. I know our, um, high school staff is, we increased flex time and is looking at doing more intervention during, during that time, being able to give more support to students also. So there are things that, it, people, I don't, I won't say that staff is sitting and just admiring the problem. Our staff is looking at it and saying, what can we do differently? I know some math classes, again, we added math staff because in particular, there were some areas that we wanted to support students better. So, um, so there's, there's, there's always a lot to do. And, um, there are a lot of different, there are a lot of different factors that are coming into play for this, for the ACT, if that's where we go back to that one. We've also met with, um, someone, um, to give more support to students in preparing for the ACT as a possibility for something that we can do for all students, not just the students who can afford it. So that's another, another thing that we've been exploring. Maybe, um, in part, so we had, we're still talking about how that could look. In part, um, you know, if we're going to invest in this as a district, we'd also want the ACT to be something that is valued by students and by higher education as well. Is the ACT coming back? We're, we don't know that entirely yet. It goes back and forth. So, um, I think I, I don't even remember where I started, when I started going. So if I didn't answer your question, I can go back. Okay. Cause I know I, I know I just started going there.
Barb, can I just dig into something you said a little bit about math at OH? You were surprised by the scores. So that made me think, yikes. Well, the OH math specialist for the high math learners just retired. So is that spot filled with, and this is both of you, please. Do you then look at your teachers in that grade? When someone retires, who's the math person? Do they, then do you talk to all the teachers in that section and say, all right, who's good at math here? Who wants the, who wants to take math?
Everyone's good at math.
That's right.
We're all good at math.
We're all good at math, Jenny. You know, that's the motto throughout the district. Everyone can do math. See what I'm asking?
Yes, there are comprehensive conversations about who is, uh, who is interested, who feels like they have the capacity and the, the skillset in order to, shepherd those high-end kids along. And we have great fits in both fourth and fifth grade for those.
And we have great, and we have great, um, teachers to shepherd all of our students along. So we, we're talking about a tier one, um, situation here. It's that all students we're looking at in the classroom, um, classroom, at, at, at grade level. It's not just our students who are at higher levels beyond.
I didn't mean to do the high, the gifted and talented kids. I meant in each section, they kind of switch around for, some teachers switch around for math and English.
Right.
Is that a, you meet with the section and say who's interested in math?
That's a Suzy conversation.
It's a Suzy. Okay.
Yeah.
Your staff.
So I guess I have one last piece that, I know this is more the reporting on where we're at with the data, thinking about where we could go to. A question I have for us to unpack and look at is, again, I brought up the point of limited time with secondary students. To me, I feel as though the students who are performing well in MCA and/or ACT, and then we haven't even gotten to the AP, they're probably all that same bucket. Those kids would perform well no matter where, what environment they were in, whether they were in Matamidi schools or somewhere else. Many of those students just are high-performing scholars. I worry about our kids in the middle. Those kids who are lower, have the intervention, things in place, but I worry a lot about, not just, I know Avid is one strategy, but it's only one. And I think that there's, there's so many students who aren't taking an Avid elective. And there's so many, there's so many students that fit in that bucket that I think that we need to think about that larger net of that group to me. That's the, that's the population I'm most concerned about with this data because that's probably representing the majority of why our data is stagnant, I, if I had to guess. But again, I'm kind of guessing. You know, the other challenge, I, I can't help myself, is the, um, the MCA is given to 11th grade students regardless of what class they're in. So some of our students, um, are in a very appropriately placed math class that is, um, has not hit all of the standard, and they have not hit all the standards by 11th grade. They may hit them by 12th grade. And that's appropriate because our high school math, um, standards are very high. Minnesota math standards at the high school level are very high compared to nationally. So it is appropriate for our kids to, um, complete those standards in 12th grade. And they still have to take the test in 11th grade. So that's one. We also have students that are well beyond the standards and they have, they've moved on. They're taking their classes that they don't want to be bothered with the, um, MCA. And we, you know, twist their arm and try and get them to come. And some of them do, but not all of them. And so there, I mean, there is a system problem with the MCA math at the high school level because of course requirements, which is different than, um, like a reading test, which is not, it, it can be very different. So, um, I just can't help myself. I just want to be clear that there are ways that we support our students. And part of supporting the students is to, um, hit the standards by the time they leave us. They might just not hit it by the time they're in 11th grade. And that's, I mean, since the pandemic, I'll say that we have more students everywhere where they're, they need some, a little extra time. And that's okay. Well, and to kind of add on to what you're saying, there's tremendous flaws in the MCA. There's so many things and there's biases and all sorts of things. But I'm just looking at data year over year. And so that's the part that's consistent and the, and I would love to say that, you know, I love the profile of a graduate piece and the yes and, like, not one or the other, but the yes and to both. Yeah. So to be, I, to be clear, if, I, I also believe that I want students achieving at high levels on math standards. I just want us to be clear about sometimes it takes kids longer and I don't want us to see, I don't want kids to feel as though they have failed if they have not met those standards until 12th grade because that is, that is appropriate. And we do have more kids that needs more support right now. So.
Am I hearing you correctly that in years past, we had more students going through our school who were meeting those standards earlier? We have a larger population of kids now who it takes them until graduation to maybe reach all the standards.
We may, we may. But again, the other thing is as we've gotten better at, um, encouraging students to take, to personally, go after, you know, sentry classes or taking, um, math classes earlier, that's another component of it. But yes, I do think that we have students who, um, need more time right now, especially after the pandemic. And that, it's, it's, it's what it is. And we do have a, we have a limiting, um, high school schedule. We have a six-period day when, um,
Which is why we looked at changing this high school schedule.
It's challenging. So it's challenging to, you know, like if we look at, say, why is that a schedule? It still has the four, um, four classes and four quarters that we used to have way back in the day that people miss. There's more flexibility there. A seven-period day has more flexibility for more of that. So I'm going off task. I know that. But I just want us to also have some context on that as well. And I don't want students, I guess that's right. That's, that's what the button was that pushed me, um, was I don't want students feeling as though if they're not hitting the standards by 11th grade, that they're somehow not going to be prepared because they can be prepared. It just may take them a while.
This isn't even a question. So hopefully this is brief, but you had requested the science data, hopefully at some point. Is it possible to get kind of one-cut, deeper data? Cause when I look at the state average bar on the MCA charts, I, I, I just, it, it seems like it should be compared against like the state aver- average for grades three through five if we're going to compare OH and six through eight if we're going to compare middle school versus comparing against the entire state average. Does that make sense? So whether we can do it by grade level or if we're going to group it by Matamidi schools, can we compare it against state average by the same groups? Just so we can get a feel for what the trend is compared to, um, the state over the last, you know, four or five years?
It would be challenging to gather like three through five. The state report card can report by grade level. And then for us, that becomes a really small group that fluctuates year to year. That's why we looked at it as a school. I can see what I can do to pull that together.
If it's possible, if we could even just get it emailed to review at some point. Um, and I think I know the answer to this one, but that group of peer schools that we tend to try to compare ourselves against, whether it's the ACT data or the MCA data, are we able to access any of that to see how we're tracking in comparison to those districts? Or is that still something that we can't track them?
No, we can, we can look at that.
Yeah.
It's on the, it's on the, um, it's on the report card.
Cause if nothing else, maybe there's something that they're doing that we could replicate or something like that. Like, I'm just trying to think outside the box to see if there's something else out there.
So if you haven't checked out the state report card, it's pretty powerful. And then you can select which schools and kind of compare them. So if you just search, um, online MDE, I think it's like state.
State report card.
Report card, is that what it's called? It's, it's pretty great data out there. But yeah, I mean, that would be great to see some of that. I can show you how that works.
All right. I'm moving us on to the last piece that I'm going to talk about tonight is high school advanced placement. So I have for you in this chart, the courses that we offer that are AP courses. I think it's important to recognize that the college board needs to approve that moniker of advanced placement. So we can't have an advanced placement business class because that doesn't exist. We have to do what the college board has in their list. And there is a rigorous course audit process. So they review the course syllabus, they review the teacher's credentials. And I think it's also important to recognize that school, students who take those AP courses, because of the way that they are organized and written and packaged, the students get familiar with college-level work. They develop those college readiness skills like time management, critical thinking, scholarly writing. That's part of that AP, um, moniker, if you will. So I compiled for you the number of students who took AP exams. This is across the school, the high school, from grades nine to 12, although their, um, ninth grade, there are limited opportunities in AP courses. So we typically see students who are taking AP classes at the junior and senior level. The number of exams that were taken by those students and then the average score of all of those exams. And then AP puts out a percent of exams with scores of three or higher because that's typically the mark of if you earn a three or higher for most schools who accept AP, that's where, that's the, the leverage point to earn college credit. So that is our, our chart of 2020 to 2024.
The number of AP classes we offer. And I think it would be at some point a really good idea to include that in one of our publications, just where we compare with other districts because the, the amount of classes, and I guess the variety of classes we offer, I, I think we're, we're probably like one of the best. I mean, we have some of the best offerings. Maybe I'm missing something, but.
I think for a school our size, we really do offer an impressive number of AP courses.
Of AP pre-calc this year.
Yes.
That's new to, to the college board too.
Yes.
I think it was, was it new last year? The first year they offered it?
I believe so. And we heard the proposal, and it's in effect this year. Any questions for me? Here? All right. So as a, I've shared with you before, each August, our schools instructional leadership teams come together, and they review satellite and map level data. They set their continuous improvement areas for the school year. This year, the middle school and the high school continue to focus on organizational strategies that are part of our new AVID programming. That is not their only goal, but that is a continued focus. And like, we all have heard a lot about our elementary schools continue to focus on their literacy programming connected to the REACT. When I come back to do the World's Best Workforce Report in late October, which is prior to the school board meeting, not at, at the school board meeting, I will walk through some of those initiatives and, and plans that were in place last year and share with you the data about how we're making progress in those areas. So as we wrap up, we did a lot of stop and ask questions. What will be helpful for me to know is which of the satellite data seems most valuable to you as a school, school board member? And what would it be helpful to better understand in addition to the questions that you've already asked?
I'm just going to say quickly, I think the big takeaway that I would hope you get from me, and I think we all, probably all feel this way, is because it's hard for us to have a good context with satellite data, and we can't really capture the street data because it's too individualized, is there any way that we can really have something shared with us that we can see this is, our students are on track towards the ultimate goal of graduating proficient? And with, you know, obviously, we have all these other things we want them to achieve. But in terms of what we think these tests capture and what we really still don't always get to see, if, if there's a way to capture that, and especially probably at that high school level, I feel like we see, see it a little bit better with those, because those younger grades have those tests that we can see. So that's what I would take away from that.
Hi.
Can I get a motion? Oh. Moved by Director Domon.
Second.
Second by Director Peterson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.